Yeah, that's the same way with most of these people. That's what I mean, that's why I was surprised.
Yeah.
She was a little bit disappointed. Especially, oh, she felt needed with her.
You see, I could have done without raising my hand.
Uh, Sierra Bond.
No, it's down.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and get started tonight. Uh, go ahead and get started with tonight's, uh, city commission meeting. Uh, can we get a roll call please? This is Tabitha.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to upset this evening, so Vice Mayor Scribner.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Litchman.
Here.
Present. Uh, we have Pastor Mark Somerville with the Family Worship Center to give us our dedication.
Shalom, Pastor. Our gracious Father, tonight we're thankful that we can come to you this evening, seek your wisdom and your guidance at this city council meeting. We pray your hand a blessing upon each member of our council tonight. We just pray your blessing upon this meeting. We pray in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Uh, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To fire the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got, uh, one proclamation this evening, uh, for Parks and Recreation Professionals Day. It says, whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of El Dorado, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas our parks and recreation professionals daily maintain our pools, beaches, campsites, marinas, picnic areas, athletic fields, skate parks, dog parks, festival venues, gardens, visitor centers, historic and cultural attractions, and many other recreational facilities and amenities as unsung services. And whereas Kansas local parks generate over 1 billion in economic activity annually with the service of parks and recreation professionals. And whereas there are over 8,000 programmers, managers, maintainers, landscapers, facilitators, lifeguards, coaches, event organizers, and caretakers who plan, provide, operate, and enhance the experience of our parks, recreation programs, and facilities in the state of Kansas. And whereas the city of El Dorado recognizes the benefits derived from the service of our parks and recreation professionals. Now therefore, I Vice Mayor Cindy Scribner do hereby recognize Friday, July 18th, 2025 as Parks and Recreation Professionals Day, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. And witness thereof, I here to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of El Dorado, Kansas, to be affixed on the 21st day of July, 2025. We'll move on to personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the city commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Enrol Ashlock at 316-321-9100 by 5:00 PM Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes. Any presentation is for information purposes only. No action will be taken. We have two tonight, and we will start with the El Dorado Inc. second quarter update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am back with another El Dorado Inc. update. It's time for the second quarter of 2025. So over the past three months, I have responded to eight different requests for proposals for projects, mainly coming from the Kansas Department of Commerce. The types of projects we're seeing include tire manufacturing, chemical production, solar panel manufacturing, and liquid distribution. We also have an exciting project win from this past quarter that I referred to in the first quarter. Um, a company we've been working with for just over a year through an RFP from the Kansas Department of Commerce has officially signed a lease for the 30,000 square foot building, the old Pioneer Automation Building on Haverhill. This will be the company's first U.S. location, and it will serve as their launch point for growth in the American market. Once they are ready to make that formal public announcement, hopefully that will be very soon, we will be sure to share that with everyone. On the commercial side, there were 11 permits issued last quarter with a total reported value of 16,800. A significant portion of the permit activity from last quarter includes remodel permits at the Quail Ridge Apartments, and those values were already reported in the quarter one update. So that brings our year-to-date commercial permit investment value to 7.7 million dollars. From April through June, there were 10 new residential starts totaling 1.7 million dollars in investment with an average home value of 171,000 dollars. And that brings us to 15 new residential builds year-to-date with a total invested value of 2.66 million dollars. On the industrial recruitment side, we have completed a video sales letter, which you can view at your convenience. It's on the QR code on the printed report I gave you. It will also go out in our upcoming quarterly newsletter. This video is part of our new strategy to target industrial prospects via LinkedIn and other different direct marketing methods, allowing us to reach specific companies and people that we hope to recruit. Back in June, I was invited by the Greater Wichita Partnership to attend the Paris Air Show where I met with over 23 companies and site selectors over the course of four days. And I also had the chance to spend time with Senator Jerry Moran, Congressman Ron Estes, Lieutenant Governor David Toland, House Majority Leader Chris Croft, and leadership from WSU, WSU-TAC, and Nyer, among many, many others. It was a huge Kansas delegation that went to that event. And it was a whirlwind week of meetings and events, and I'm happy to share that since I have been back, there has been promising follow-up activity on several different projects. We at El Dorado Inc. have also begun early conversations about potential development opportunities at the El Dorado Municipal Airport. We believe there's strong potential to leverage that asset for future growth, and we're eager to explore how we can position the airport as a driver of economic activity. A few other quick notes. As you know, the workforce pipeline is critical to our business retention and growth. This past quarter, I attended a meeting at Butler Community College that they organized focused on apprenticeship degrees, which is a model that allows students or transitioning workers to earn while they learn. And I am learning more about this initiative and, and how we can help spread the word to employers to, uh, get them to participate in these types of programs, get our youth involved or transitioning workers. You'll find a few more notes in the printed report I gave you, but I will wrap up with an opportunity zone update. The recently passed Big Beautiful Bill reopens and expands the opportunity zone benefits, allowing investors to once again defer capital gains by reinvesting in qualified projects with the potential for tax-free growth over time. As part of this rollout, the opportunity zone tracks will be redefined by mid-next year, and we at Inc. are working to proactively make sure that El Dorado will be included. We'll be lobbying at the state level to advocate for the inclusion of our eligible tracks. I know this can be kind of complex and confusing, but I will break it down further in the newsletter that will be coming out, um, later this week about what the opportunity is and what that could mean for El Dorado. So in the meantime, uh, before the tracks are selected, we are already trying to lay that groundwork, engaging regional partners. We're going to engage experts to make sure that we are ready when that door for investment opens. So with that, thank you again for your time and continued support of El Dorado Inc. Happy to answer any questions. Or if you feel free to reach out anytime.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sounds like you guys have been busy and a lot of things moving in the right direction.
Yes.
Slowly, but moving in the right direction.
Yes, that's good. That's the goal. Thank you.
All good news, thank you. Um, our next personal appearance this evening, I think is a new presentation to the commission. We have Christina Trionna with the, uh, Senior Center. She's the director of the Senior Center, and she's here to give us a presentation.
And it's Treya.
Treya, sorry.
It's okay, Treya's the name. Good evening, thank you. Again, my name is Christina Triona. I am the new director of the El Dorado Senior Center, also known as El Dorado's Best kept secret. Our mission is simple but impactful, to provide a safe, welcoming space where older adults can connect, thrive, and continue living meaningful lives. The El Dorado Senior Center was founded in 1989 by dedicated leaders who laid the foundation for a vibrant community hub. Originally located at 128 North Vine, the center quickly outgrew its space, leading to the completion of a 6,000 square foot facility in 1993 and a 4,000 square foot addition in 2004. These expansions reflect El Dorado's strong commitment to providing older adults a welcoming space to thrive, connect, and live independently. Today, the center continues its mission to support dynamic, healthy, and independent lifestyles for those aged 50 and older. It's important for everyone to understand where our funding comes from. A significant portion is provided through a contract with the Butler County Department on Aging. As part of this agreement, we are required to maintain a certain level activities, educational programs, and related services. We are currently funded at the highest eligible level and receive this funding on a quarterly basis. Additional funding comes from the city of El Dorado's general fund, which is received annually. The center operates under a five-year MOU with the city, which is set to be renegotiated in 2026 for the 2027 fiscal year. In order to receive quarterly funding from the Butler County Department on Aging, the El Dorado Senior Center upholds several important requirements, each one designed to ensure we're meeting the needs of our community with care and purpose. Here are just a few of the standards we proudly meet. Publishing a monthly newsletter to keep our members informed, connected, and engaged. Hosting at least 65 educational activities each year. That's more than one every single week. Seeking additional support through donations, grants, fundraisers, city taxes, membership dues, and newsreels to keep our programs thriving. Serving a minimum of 6,000 noon meals annually because good nutrition and shared meals build health and friendship. These aren't just numbers, the reflection of our deep commitment to the older adults we serve every day. We are proud to be one of several senior centers and clubs across Butler County that receive vital support from the Butler County Department on Aging. Each center plays a unique role in its community, and the county helps sustain these programs by allocating funds to each one, ensuring older adults throughout the county have access to connection, support, and resources. Every other month, representatives from each senior center and club gather for the Butler County Senior Center Association meetings. These meetings are more than just updates. They're a time to share ideas, offer encouragement, and work together to grow our programs. We talk about ways to boost membership, strengthen fundraising efforts, and provide even better services to the people we serve. This collaboration reminds us that we're not in this alone. We're part of a larger family, working together to uplift and support older adults throughout Butler County. To continue serving our community, we must actively seek additional support, and we're incredibly grateful for the many ways people step up to help. We rely on grants, donation, and lots of fundraising to keep our programs running. One of our recent efforts, the Field of American Flags, displayed during the week of the Fourth of July, was not only a fundraiser, but also a powerful symbol of community pride and patriotism. In addition, we receive support through membership fees, building rentals, and generous miscellaneous donations. Every bid counts, and it all helps us continue offering meaningful services and activities. We also want to give a special thank you to those who donate bingo prizes. You bring so much joy to our members, and your kindness doesn't go unnoticed. We offer a wide range of services from hot lunches and health screenings to game days, guest speakers, and arts and crafts. Everything, everything we do is about connection and dignity. Our participation continues to grow. We currently serve over 400 active members and provide up to 60 meals a day. We especially, we're especially proud of our strong turnout for events like potlucks, which often brings in over 100 guests. We recently compared participation between the first and second quarters of 2024 and 2025, and the numbers tell a story of momentum and enthusiasm. Notable increases were seen in our coffee group, which continues to go as a daily connection point for many. Lunches, where demanded attendance has steadily risen. Our dance, which has brought joy and energy to more and more attendees each month. And of course, potlucks, where fellowship and food go hand in hand, and participation has soared. These numbers reflect more than attendance. They show how much this center means to the people who come through our doors. It's a place to eat, laugh, dance, and belong. This chart represents the age breakdown of our current members. While it doesn't include everyone, some prefer not to share their date of birth. It offers a great snapshot of the diverse age groups we proudly serve. We are currently at 435 members, with 167, 67 new members joining in 2025 alone. We're also proud to recognize the 47 veterans among our members. Their presence is a meaningful part of our center's community and legacy. And yes, our thriving 90 to 99 age group includes over 30 members, many of whom are some of our most active and involved participants. We work closely with valued community partners like HeadStar and the Sunland Advocacy Center to extend our reach and create meaningful experiences, not only for those who serve, but for our members as well. Our members have lovingly organized a hat and mitten drive, crafted Valentines, and assembled Easter baskets for children and families supported by these organizations. These efforts not only give back to the community, but also create special moments of joy, purpose, and connection for our members. This year, we enjoyed a special evening at an El Dorado Wellness baseball game, and were surprised on Valentine's Day when EHS Encore stepped up to serenades with songs from the heart. Lieutenant Thompson frequently joins us for Coffee with the Cop. Air Force veteran Chelsea Thornhill has brought her, brought her talents to the center by leaving painting sessions. We were also honored to host both county and city commissioners for a lunch that drew 96 attendees, a testament to the strength of our relationships and the incredible support from our community leaders. These special moments help remind us that the El Dorado Senior Center is more than a building. It's a place where friendships are formed, memories are made, and community comes together. We're making exciting upgrades, launching an automated check-in system, rolling out new membership cards, and refreshing our communication to stay better connected with our members. We are most proud of our newly created Veterans Recognition Corner. This has been grant and community funded. Our Veterans Recognition Project is a beautiful reflection of what can happen when a community comes together with purpose and pride. From scout trip 222, Painting the Space, to the McConnell Wardogs carefully placing photos and hanging frames. Every detail has been handled with care and respect. Confab generously created the stunning military branch artwork, and funding from numerous local organizations made it all possible. This project is something truly special, unique to our center and our community, and it continues to grow. It stands not only as a tribute to the brave men and women who served, but also as a reminder of the heart and unity of El Dorado. We are incredibly proud of what this project represents, honor, service, and the power of community. To continue growing and serving more residents, we're looking at a few key needs. Two more ADA toilets for the men's restrooms. Currently, they have none. Handicapped parking signs on the north side. Currently, there are none. Brighter parking lot lights. Automatic doors on the north side. Our windows need resailed. And most importantly, to prevent trips and falls, our sidewalks need repaired. Our vision is bold. We want to reach every senior in El Dorado who needs support, offer more diverse programming, and build an even stronger sense of community through city collaboration. We'd love for you to come experience our center firsthand. These upcoming events are great opportunities to see the energy and heart of our members. Thank you for your continued support of the El Dorado Senior Center. Together, we are ensuring that aging in El Dorado is something to look forward to. Any questions?
Is this your newsletter for the month?
Yeah.
Just for July?
Yeah.
Okay. Do they, do they ever get to go home and rest?
No, they were, we all came to meet caravan together.
I'd like to.
On the fifth floor.
I'd like to mention that I went to the presentation that Frank Wall gave. Fantastic, the food was fantastic. But just to listen to Frank talk about the things in the past, we, I remember I was a kid in Benton Look out a cellar door in 1958. We saw that, and my wife and her sister ran for the storm cellar where they lived across from the park. So it was just a neat deal to go to. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great, thank you. I mean, it's places like the Senior Center that make El Dorado such a great place to live. It's important that they're supported, and Christina, from what I've seen, apparently has done it. I mean, the data shows that she's done a great job getting new members, and they're, they're active in a lot of things for them to do, so, well done. Uh, we're gonna move on to public comments. Persons who wish to address the city commission regarding any matter that is under the jurisdiction of the city commission may do so when called upon by the mayor. Comments on personal matters, matters pending in court, and land use matters are not permitted. Land use public hearings are held during planning commission meetings. Is there anybody here for public comment? Yes.
Good evening, all. My name is Terri Boland. I live at 647 North Street. I am a member of the Senior Center, one of the younger members of the Senior Center, and I am a member-at-large on the board. I just would like to say how grateful and thankful I am to Christina and what she has done, what she's accomplished at the Senior. We do keep getting new members. We have a lot to offer. We have great food. You ought to come down and have lunch someday because it is just really good home-cooked meals. And I just, uh, hope that you will see what she's doing there and that you will continue to support us and have a place for us to go and hang out and visit, play cards and games, and just have a great time with each other, so, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else here for public comment? All right, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Uh, tonight, we will be taking up the city commission work session minutes from June 30th, 2025. The appointment of Linda Bane, Sierra Bond, Becky Walter, and Rachel, Rachel Topper to serve as board members, and Sean Pennard to serve as a ex officio capacity to the Experience El Dorado Advisory Board for a term set to expire December 31st, 2027. Authorization to purchase a street sweeper from Key Equipment and Supply Company at a cost of $375,971.20 and approval of appropriation ordinance number 06-25 in the amount of $1,440,712.88. Do I have a motion?
I move we approve said agenda.
Second.
A motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Uh, we will move on to new business. The first item tonight in new business is consideration of a resolution of the city of El Dorado, Kansas relating to the subordination of its taxable industrial bonds, Series A 2016 and Series B 2016, days-in hotel and suites issued for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and equipping, equipping a hall, a hotel facility, approving termination and release of the guarantee agreement, approving new ownership of the developer under the Community Improvement District, and authorizing other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Ms. Westmayor, in commission, uh, in 2015, the city commission approved an IRB and a CIB for the days-in hotels. They have been doing all the things that they need to do every year to continue that IRB. And they have recently got their ownership change. In that ownership change, Ray Brata, that is usually the gentleman you see at the front desk there at the hotel, he has switched the other partners. I have to stand this slowly because it took me two times to get it first. Um, the, the partners that owned the 2016 A bonds are the ones that sold. And Ray has, uh, requested that a bank take those bonds over. So a bank is now holding that loan, and those bonds are being paid off with this action. The, there are other partners involved now, I think, but, um, the primary one will be Ray. There's no financial liability for the city for this action. We just need to, uh, allow them to give that bond up to the bank, and then they can move on. Have any questions? There's a very short explanation of this. It's taken some time, I think. So the, uh, motions, or the motion that is there will approve the resolution and then also allow us to sign other documents associated with the sale. And so, we agree.
You ready for a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I move to approve a resolution relating to the subordination of its taxable industrial revenue bond, Series A 2016 and Series B 2016, days-in hotel and suites issued for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and equipping a hotel facility, approving termination and release of the guarant, guarantee agreement, approving new ownership of the developer under the Community Improvement District, and authorizing other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item number 13, consideration, um, consideration and ordinance amending section 10.04.010 of the El Dorado Municipal Court pertaining to traffic and incorporating by reference the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas City's 52nd Edition with certain omissions, changes, and additions prescribing additional regulations, providing certain penalties, and repealing prior ordinances. Set chief.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Commission. Uh, there's just a few in the STO to cover tonight. Uh, the first is section 114.5, uh, which relates to worksite utility vehicles. This is just a language change in the statute. In subsection, uh, C3, uh, the league referred to worksite utilities, utility vehicles, and then in the next sentence referred to ATVs, and all they did was, uh, change that language to, uh, back to worksite utility vehicles to ensure that the proper vehicle was being governed under that provision. Section 201.1, which, uh, references failure to comply with a citation. There is new language in that statute that now offers, uh, qualified people the opportunity, it's a 60-day period to, uh, apply for a restricted driver's license. That 60 days allows them to be compliant with the citation that they failed to comply on to begin with. After that 60-day period is when they would impose a suspension period on the driver's license. Typically, right now, uh, on a, on a failed-to-comply citation after so many days, uh, the municipal court sends, uh, documents to Topeka, and that violator's driver's license is automatically suspended. So this just gives a, kind of a grace period, uh, for a restriction on the driver's license to come into compliance with, with a citation. In section 40.3, this is a new statute, uh, to the STO, and it is, uh, regarding, uh, passing a stationary vehicle displaying hazard or caution lights. As it reads right now, that the only requirement for, uh, motors to slow down and move over is for emergency vehicles on the side of the highway. They've now implemented language to, uh, take into consideration disabled vehicles or vehicles on the side of the highway that, that display hazard or warning signals. And in the UPOC, uh, 6.7.2, references trespassing on critical infrastructure facilities.
We'll get to that one in a minute.
I'm sorry?
We'll get to that one in a minute.
Okay.
Let's take care of the STO.
Sure.
I'm back to you.
Okay. Any, do you have any questions on those?
Yes.
Okay.
We address golf carts and we address ATVs, but do we ever address kids on scooters? That when I was growing up, you used your foot and not a motor to get around on.
So I don't know if you noticed, but I did address that on social media just yesterday. We've been getting several complaints about kids on scooters just darting across roadways from sidewalks. So I did put something out on social media about that yesterday. I don't, I haven't looked at the responses, but I'm hoping, my intent was to partner with parents to provide educational pieces to their kids and the importance of stopping and looking before crossing a roadway.
But there's nothing in any law that prohibits the.
There, so, when you have controlled intersection, there is. And what I mean by a controlled intersection is you, you go up, you push the button, you see the hand come up on the thing that, that tells you to stop, or it gives you so many seconds to cross the roadway. Uh, uncontrolled, uh, intersections like that, there really isn't. Uh, it's, it's more of a safety issue than, than, you know, a statutory requirement, so.
Are they allowed to ride those on sidewalks?
Are they allowed to ride those on sidewalks? Motorized?
Uh, there's, I'm sorry.
Are they allowed to ride the motorized, uh, little scooter wheels?
I don't believe there's anything in our city ordinance that prohibits it right now.
Is that becoming more of a problem?
It is. Uh, we, I, I have taken several complaints, uh, especially over the last two weeks on, on, uh, motorized scooters, especially in the downtown area.
Is this something we need to address?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
It, it's, it's becoming more and more of a thing. You're welcome. Anything else on the STO?
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve an ordinance amending section 10 dot 04 dot 010 of the El Dorado Municipal Code pertaining to traffic and incorporating by reference the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas City's 52nd edition with certain omissions, changes, and additions prescribing additional regulations, providing certain penalties, and repealing prior ordinances.
Second. Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Alright, item number 14, consideration of an ordinance amending section 9.04.010 of the El Dorado Municipal Code pertaining to traffic and incorporating by reference the Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas City's 41st Edition. Chief.
Yes, so, in section 6.7.2, uh, this is relating to trespassing on, uh, critical infrastructure facilities, and the statute reads pretty much the same, uh, the language is the same. Uh, however, in the statute, it identifies what a, uh, critical infrastructure facility is and its things such as refineries, uh, and electrical substations.
And it's still just a misdemeanor, because it's...
Yes, it is still used to, just a misdemeanor.
Would the, would the, um, water plant count as...
Yes, that's critical, that is critical infrastructure.
Okay.
Ready for a motion?
Yep.
I move to approve an ordinance amending section 9 dot 04 dot 010 of the El Dorado Municipal Code pertaining to traffic and incorporating by reference the Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas City's 41st Edition.
Second. Alright, we got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item number 15, consideration of a motion to award the low bid to Kansas Paving at a cost of $391,298 for the 2015 payment surface restoration projects, and authorizing the city manager to award the contract. Second.
Yes, so, we just recently opened bids. Um, this would be for our street rehabilitation, so the sales tax funds that go to street rehab. Um, within this project, there are 53 city blocks that we're looking to do, um...
Wow.
...new pavement surface on. Those streets include South Emporia from Pine to Tuanda, South Denver from Central Adams, South Washington Central to Tuanda, West Pine Tailored to Emporia, West Ash Star to High, West Carr from Star to Atchison, West Kansas from Star to Atchison, and West to Wander from Star to Washington. This project will be a thin bonded asphalt surface treatment, um, and it will be about a five-eighths, five-eighths inch thick, uh, lift of asphalt. There will not be milling on the road, um, like you see in your typical milling overlays. Um, this will be a good treatment, um, for these roads and the condition they are in currently. Um, and again, Kansas Paving came in with a low bid. Um, the engineer's estimate on the project was $500,490, um, so we did receive quite a good bid. There were two other bidders on the project, Pearson Construction, um, at $531,544, and APAC at $650,895.96. Um, in your packet and on the screen this evening is a map highlighting the streets, um, that will be part of this project, and again, that is 53 blocks, so feel pretty good about knocking out a pretty sizable area of town. Um, this will be our first use of this, um, surface treatment in the city of El Dorado. To give you an example, um, US 77 that they just did north of town from McCollum all the way up to the county line, that's the same type of pavement.
That's nice.
It's a malleghutter.
A malleghutter is, um, in the intersections where we have concrete, where the water flows through the intersection, the concrete.
When you have three beds that have such a difference in range. Yeah, I mean...
In, in talk to them, it's all about their, their schedule, their availability, how bad they need work versus how busy they are.
Right.
Kansas Paving hasn't worked in the city for probably in excess of 10 years.
Wow.
So, um, they were interested in the project and were hungry for some work.
So, thank you, Scott.
Yep.
Take a motion, okay? Yes, a motion? Yep.
Uh, I move to award the low bid to Kansas Paving at a cost of $391,298 for the 2025 pavement surface restoration projects, and authorizing the city manager to award the contract.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Not all opposed, or, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And it carries. Great. Uh, number 16, consideration of an ordinance of the City of El Dorado, Kansas establishing certain new sections of the city code concerning a policy for the discretionary waiver of permit fees in response to damage from natural events or other circumstances impacting community welfare.
Um, crafted this ordinance in a response to the recent flood event and, um, the agreement to waive building permit fees during that event, and the response and recovery from that event. Um, so it took a little time to think more in-depth about this ordinance and what it may look like, um, and how it could affect more than just an event like that, because, um, there are certain circumstances where an economic development project may warrant the waiving of a certain amount of building permit fees or in all, or there may be a health and safety issue that needs addressed, and part of an effort in, in neighborhood revitalization or, or resolving the problem quickly may be a waiver of a permit fee, or, um, other unforeseen events. Just as examples, as we were thinking through drafting this ordinance, or, you know, um, not all disasters or, or events would really want a wave of permit fee necessarily. Generally, I think the way staff has crafted this is, we want it to impact the citizens and, and to be the benefactors of this. An example may be a large hailstorm or something, a lot of those events would be covered by insurance, and so the waiving of a permit fee in that case, when your staff's doing a lot of work, that waiver of the fee is probably going to go back to the owner of the property, you know? The insurance company would pay it, or the contractor would just reap that benefit. So that's kind of the reason, if you see how this is drafted, or rationale on some of those things. A lot of times, there's, um, projects that, say, senior housing or low-income housing, they're applying for grants, and a lot of times, these applicants could get additional points in their matrix when applying for funds or different programs if the city waives a building permit fee. So, by making this more inclusive than just reacting to the flood event, we added those cer, that type of language to it.
Any questions for Scott? Glad you guys took time to think through everything, so.
That's a good deal. Well, I move to approve an ordinance of the City of El Dorado, Kansas, establishing certain new sections of the city code concerning a policy for the discretionary waiver or permit fees in response to damage from natural events or other circumstances impacting community welfare.
Second. Uh, motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Uh, we know I have any discussion items tonight, so we'll move on to City Commission and Advisory Board updates. Commissioner Wilkins, second.
Uh, Main Street meets this week? This week. That's it? Yeah, ABC had it now.
Okay. Commissioner Leachman?
Uh, we'll have a meeting come up with, uh, City Parks and Recs, but it's going to be next month.
Okay. Mr....
Nothing to report.
Okay, I also have nothing to report, so, city managers report?
Alrighty, uh, we had a great meeting this afternoon with Garver to kind of go to the last bits on the information needed to be updated for the pro formas in the Aquatics and Exhibition. Uh, they're hoping to have that information updated later this week, uh, and then we are planning on presenting the information to the commissions, as well as the committee and the public, uh, in August, dates of yet to be confirmed on when all of those will take place. Uh, Gravity Works is preparing a few options for preserving the Forest Park Van Shell, considering the many comments we received with respect to the Great Park Pavilion. Um, I met Dave Stewart at the Van Shell the other day to discuss some options, what that might look like. He's concerned about preserving the existing structure as is because of some challenges that will, that will create for not only the, the band itself, but also for the viewing patrons, uh, as well. It'll also potentially increase the costs, and will probably require a lift. So, uh, he's preparing that nonetheless, so that we can have that discussion with the commission, as well as with the, with the community, to determine what, um, what the ultimate plan will be. Um, we are continuing to run public input through the end of the month, or I'm sorry, through July 25th, with the goal of bringing the topic back up, including public feedback to the commission in August. Uh, one thing we will need to figure out is if we want to have a public forum to have folks come and voice their opinions on that, or if we just want to take the comments that have already been provided, uh, via the survey, as well as Facebook, or if you want to open it up to a bigger forum, I guess. Uh, we have had a lot of interest in that subject, and, uh, I know there's a lot of people that are, that have opinions one way or the other, and I think it's important to kind of fill those out before we make a decision on what we want to do also with that, uh, project. Um, let's see, the city plans to open bids on August 1st with the Central Avenue Service Rehabilitation Project on Central Avenue Hill, which will be from Jones to Haverhill, uh, so we're hitting, hitting Central Avenue pretty good this year, as we finish up the Central Avenue Improvement Project, and then we've got the Waterline Project, and then we'll have this rehabilitation project. This will be a Mill and Overlay Project, so it should be a pretty quick and easy project. Um, we anticipate it'll start sometime in some time, hopefully, and then we complete it, uh, within 30 days after that. Uh, the contractor's installing a casing water pipe main, water main pipe on the Central and Haverhill Watermain Project that's out there by QT, Central and Haverhill. Uh, the tie-in to the water system is planned into next week. Staff anticipates completion of the project by August 11th. So, we do know that that, uh, has kind of been a drag on the, the, uh, traveling public, but once we get that down, it'll be good for the water main that was underneath that intersection. It removes it from the intersection, so that won't be a problem, uh, in the future. Uh, we have eight condemnation hearings scheduled for the August 4th, where you're meeting. Of those, three are related to the June 3rd flooding event, uh, so you'll be having those for that meeting. Um, and we have a couple of regular missions to communicate. The Criminal Investigations Division of the El Dorado Police Department worked with the Butler County Sheriff's Department, also with the FBI, on a recent bank robbery resulting in arrest. Their efforts, um, much appreciated on that. Uh, as well as our flock cameras were able to get some information that was used, and so the investment in that technology helped, uh, determine the, help with that arrest. Uh, Ken Huffman and Howard, I'm sorry, Ken Huffman and Howard Goldsmith recently completed the city's transition from eldo cans.com to our .gov domain. Any IT transition is always challenging, but this one's especially challenging because it affected, uh, every, nearly every employee in the city, as well as, uh, many workflows. It averaged well over 80 hours of required not only technical skills, but also diplomatic skills as well, so we tip our hat, uh, to those two in the IT department. Uh, also want to recognize Scott, uh, who has recently, uh, received the designation of professional transportation planner, which is awarded by the Transportation Professionals Certification Board in the Institute of Transportation Engineers. To earn the credential, he met the eligibility criteria, which included holding a qualifying three, documentation of professional experience, successfully completing an exam, and undergoing a board of review of qualifications credentials. It's interesting to note that only, that fewer than 1,000 professionals in the United States currently hold the designation, so...
Wow. Very good. Good job, Scott.
...to his head. And if you're looking, if you know of anyone that's looking for a job, we have three, uh, positions that are currently opening, or opened. We have a facilities maintenance technician, starting at 2316 an hour, patrol officers, starting at 2298 an hour, and roll-off driver, starting at 1762. Uh, so we would encourage you to forward good luck to our website for more information.
Have our, uh, like on the, for people come in and look on Facebook, and it talks about like our emails and things like that, does that now show gov for our address?
Yes. Yes, we're getting all of our information out, updated, so that our .gov is, is being communicated to the public. However, if they do not have that information, and they send it to our .com email addresses, they will still come through.
Still come through, okay.
For just a period of time, or forever?
Um, I think we own that domain, and so we will be pointing those to the .gov indefinitely, uh, to allow for that to happen. So right now, if you go to the website, or if you go to the internet, you type in eldo cans.com, it will forward you to .gov, and the public doesn't even know it actually happened.
Oh, that's good. They did a good job setting me up this morning. They got me fixed.
I like that comment about diplomatic. I like that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I would just piggyback off what he says, and just remind people that we don't have to have a public forum for people to come and speak to the commission. We do have public comments, um, every meeting, so, um, feel free to, to come out and let us know what you're thinking. Uh, with that said, unless somebody has anything else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second. Alright, yeah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah. Love any of you. Shout out to my call.